Good morning. It is now time to call to order the town -- fiscal town meeting for the Town of Tiverton, 2011. Do we have a quorum? Gee, I think we may have, huh? The emergency exits are lit. Two in the rear and two over here on either side of me. At this time, we will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to introduce you, ladies and gentlemen, Town Clerk Nancy Mallow.
Are you okay with this monitor? You'll be able to see when they get up to the -- Okay. Thanks. Yay, Nancy. Thanks. We're ready to roll here. Mr. Smith has already informed you of the exits and I just want to remind everyone that there are restrooms. You go across the lobby where the cafeteria was, where you registered in, and they are to the right. I will not be reading the warrant because it has been duly posted around town. I've also posted it in two places here in the meeting hall. But, and everything has been noticed. At this point, the only other thing that I want to mention is that when our tellers, when it, if it is called for a count by our tellers, you must raise your hand with the band on. They will be counting the arms with the orange band on. And please be patient with them. There's a lot of people in this room and we have some in the auditorium. They should be pointing to you with the clicker and you should be lowering your hand at that time. Okay? And I believe that's all I have. I will reintroduce the moderator. Do I have a count in the room? Yep. Someone's going to relay the count to me. And because we are using two rooms, we're going to have to use a little more patience here because I've got to get counts from the auditorium as well. And that includes when we're voting. That's nine eleven electors in this room beyond those that are non-voters. We're going to get a better system to be getting the auditorium. It's just going to take a few minutes. Oh my goodness, it is. And I just want to let you know that, um, should we go to a ballot poll?
Yeah.
Here. We will use this form. We will set them out first, this part, this part, and around, so that no one is bottling up coming in and coming out at the same time, okay? We'll begin with that, Rose. And we might want to -- while we're waiting for that count, I'm just going to make this announcement. I'm not advocating it one way or another. I'm just letting you know that should a vote go to ballot, the request of ballot, the Board of Canvass is prepared with voting machines there. It will take some time to get the process through, but we will file out and file in. They, it is a little ballot that says yes or no. It is prepared by the Board of Elections. There are privacy sleeves. You must connect the arrows and you put it in just as you were voting on an election day. And that way, the tally will be instantaneous after the last voter. One fifteen? So we have a thousand twenty-six, okay? Mr. Smith.
Any question in the quorum? I don't think so. All tellers have been sworn. At this point, we'll, we want the resolutions. The moderator's resolutions are as follows. Resolved that Town Administrator and any department head, school superintendent, and director of library services may participate in these meetings and, may participate in these proceedings, but may not vote if the person is not a registered elector of the Town of Tiverton. That includes all special officers and other, uh, department heads. Resolved, in order to conduct an orderly flow of business, the moderator will recognize the Chairman of the Budget Committee. Oh, I'm sorry. May I have a, uh, second? It's been motioned already. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Be resolved, in order to conduct an orderly flow of business, the moderator will recognize the Chairman of the Budget Committee, or his or her designee, to place the Budget Committee's recommendations before the electors. After such time, the moderator shall recognize an amendment from the department, or committee, if any, and no more than three amendments from the floor at any one time for that particular thing. Or four, if you count all the department heads. Recognize amendment from department committee, if any, and no more than three amendments from the floor, for a total of four. All motions must be seconded. Discussion shall be allowed in the reverse order in which the amendments were presented and by any maker of an amendment prior to any votes taken. In making said motion or amendment, the elector shall proceed to the nearest microphone, state his or her name and address, state the motion or amendment, which must contain a specific dollar amount if voting on a financial matter, to include the Budget Committee's recommended amount, the dollar amount, and a total after the dollar amount.
I have a point of order. Can I say now? This is my first financial town meeting, so I'm not sure what the rules are. Can I make a point of order now? Okay. I have a point of order. My name is Nina Mills and I live on Nana Quackett Road in Tiverton. I have a point of order for procedure today. Page thirty of Roberts Rules of Order, the newly revised, states that in cases where the Chair knows that persons seeking the floor have opposite opinions on the question, the Chair should let the floor alternate as far as possible between those favoring and those opposing the measure. Is that all I have to do?
And what's the question there?
Are you going to do that as part of the procedures for today?
That's on my, we go by Roberts Rules of Order?
That's in Roberts Rules, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
The resolve's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Be resolved, no motion that alters, amends, rescinds, or can reconsider. Any previous action shall be entertained by the moderator unless there are as many electors present as there were at the time when the original vote was taken. Further, the person making said motion shall have voted on the prevailing side and shall so swear or affirm such action to be true. Motion's been, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Be resolved that no motion to approve the remainder of the budget as recommended or requested or amended shall -- I'm sorry. Resolved, the annual town meeting shall be deemed to have received the written reports of the town offices and committees by this motion. May I have a motion to accept this? And a second? Motion carries if everybody approves. All approve? Motion carries. After passing an amendment to vote, to pass the main motion will be taken without further discussion, allowing the voted amendment to become final for that particular motion and become part thereof. May I have a motion to --
A point of order?
I'd like to make a comment on that motion.
On which motion, sir?
Number, on number five. I attempted to rewrite this item to remove its confusion and ambiguity because as written, it would force the FTM to a halt if it was passed and followed. However, I was forced to the conclusion that it is not worth correcting because, first, it requires a vote on the main motion after passing an amendment when most and possibly all amendments at the FTM override and negate the main motion such that a follow-up main motion would be unnecessary and contradictory. If there's a main motion to approve five hundred thousand and the amendment is to approve five hundred and ten thousand, there is no need for a vote on the main motion if the amendment is approved and any such vote would be contradictory. Second, it requires a vote taken, quote, "without further discussion," unquote, thereby making it impossible for any discussion to indicate that a vote on the main motion is unnecessary and contradictory and violating the basic democratic principle of a democratic FTM meeting. Third, with the first two reasons, it is not worth looking for any additional reasons to reject Rule Five. I therefore request that Rule Five be rejected as out of order.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
First off, I'm not sure if you got a second on that motion. Did you? Just for procedural purposes?
It was seconded.
Okay. I would disagree with, with Mr. Bennison in some respects, but I think the motion to follow Roberts Rules, because this is actually what is found in Roberts Rules, that you, when you vote on an amendment, technically you're simply adding that to the main motion.
Right.
So you do have to follow that. I would just suggest, uh, I would move to amend this if we're going to follow through with it, that after the word "main motion" in the first sentence, first line, we add the word "as amended," because that's really what you're voting on, the motion as amended, not the original motion.
Well, that would, when in announcing for the vote, it would be announced that it would be, uh, just that, it'd be including the amendment.
But as written, this violates Roberts Rules.
Yes, I understand.
So I make a motion that we add the words "as amended" after "main motion."
And it has been seconded. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
All opposed? One opposed.
Point of order?
Yes.
Nina Mills, Nana Quackett Road. Page forty-three of Roberts Rules, let me get it out to read it, states that where there is any possibility of confusion, we need to make sure the members of the congregation understand what they're voting for. Page, page forty-three. So the question is, are we going to ensure that as part of these proceedings, where there's any possibility of confusion, the Chair before calling for the vote will make sure that the members understand the effect of an "aye" vote or of a "no" vote? So in putting the question, the Chair should stand and project your voice and, that's what you're doing, I guess. But are we going to actually have the proceedings such that we make sure there's no confusion?
It will be sure that there is no confusion. The idea is devote the, uh, it will be stated as to what they are voting for, yes or no. It will be complete, including any amendments.
And the effect of the "aye" and the "no" vote as well.
Pardon?
Not just what we're voting for, "aye" and "no," but this says the effect of the "aye" and the "no" vote, so we understand what the impact is.
Yes, we should have that, yes, of course.
Thank you.
Point of order, if I may? Dana Alcock, Leonard Drive?
Please wait.
Certainly.
Yes, may I help you, sir? What's up?
Yes, thank you. It's already been stipulated that the meeting will follow the Roberts Rules of Order. I don't think we need to go through every point, so I would, I would request that we do not have to address every issue. Thank you.
As part of Roberts Rules of Order, we do have to address every issue. Okay. Now we're back on to resolve number four. Six, six, I'm sorry. Some say five, some say six. In any case, we'll go with resolve for five.
Point of what?
Uh, for six, rather.
Point of order?
Yes, we haven't voted.
Uh, I believe we still need to vote on, uh, six or, on five?
Five, yes.
We voted on the amendment but not on the motion as amended, or the, the resolve as amended?
And the amendment was? Out of. Okay. Resolve five was not voted on. We are now going to vote on it with the amendment. By passing an amendment, a vote to pass the main motion as amended will be taken without further discussion, allowing the voted amendment to become final for that particular motion. I'm sorry. That's misstated. After passing amendment, a vote to pass the, the main motion will be taken without further discussion, allowing the voted amendment to become final for the particular motion as amended and become part thereof. May I have a motion to carry this forward?
Point of order? After passing an amendment, a vote to pass the main motion as amended will be taken without further discussion. We took a vote to accept the motion with the amendment. It passed. We should be moving on to resolve six.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Bowen.
I concur with Mr. Bowen.
Resolve takes no motion to approve the remainder of the budget as recommended or requested or amended shall be approved unless said motion is adopted by a majority of the Assembly.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator? I believe you just violated that motion number five by not taking a vote with the reworded motion.
Excuse me, sir, but we did take the vote. May I have, uh, resolve six has been?
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. May I have a voice vote?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Mike Burke, sixty-seven, Durfee Road. I'm just not sure of the intent of this. Is the intent of this simply to say that you, we follow what is normal procedure, that any vote, unless it's a vote that requires a higher majority, needs to pass by two third, by a majority?
By a majority, yes.
So I'm not sure why we need this.
We really don't need it, but it's a point that it can be, uh, it can be considered that we don't operate by Roberts Rules or by the Rules of Order, so.
I would suggest that since we follow Roberts Rules, just to vote this down.
Do I have a second on this?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Deb Polish, Lake Road. Um, while I, I don't, we, it's so confusing, um, I don't see the harm in putting forth a motion that says if you're going to move the remainder of the docket, that the majority must approve it. I agree with Mr. Burke, but, I mean, I don't see the harm in just making sure that we all understand that you can move the entire docket with a majority vote.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor of not including or including this resolve? All in favor of adopting resolve number six?
Mr. Moderator, the, uh, the resolve that's before was number six. It voted down, it voted down, would take the same effect as what the Speaker was talking about. So if people don't feel that this is an appropriate resolve, then they should vote not to approve the resolve, which means it does not exist. It does not take an amendment or a modification to this. You just say "no" to it and it doesn't exist on our resolve. It's not part of the procedure. It's as simple as that. And that's what, I think that's the understanding you want to get out here. If you vote "yes" on number six, then the resolve as printed will be included in the procedure for today. If you vote "no," then that is not included. It's that simple. Let's try to keep this simple and not complicate the matter. So I think the vote on that issue will resolve whether or not we follow that resolve. Thank you.
Very well put. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator? Mike Carrero, one-five-two Bracket Avenue, Tiverton, Rhode Island, Tiverton High School, class of nineteen seventy-two. Uh, I'd like to make a motion. The motion reads as follows: In the event the moderator chooses to step down from his position, that this body elect Mr. Michael Burke? Please. That if the moderator chooses to step?
There is, there is a motion on the floor. And it has nothing to do with that. The motion on the floor is?
We can only have one motion on the floor at a time?
Yes. The motion on the floor is to vote on resolve number six. All in favor of resolve number six? All, not in favor of it? The ayes have it.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion. And in the sense of, uh, moving this thing, uh, meeting forward, the motion reads, if the present moderator elected at the oh-nine financial town meeting chooses to step down, that this body elect the person who came in number two in that election, Mr. Michael Burke. And I make that in a form of a motion. Point of order? Point of order?
That, that motion is out of order for these procedures at this point. We are still in resolves, we are now moving on to the town council resolves. Yes, sir.
That's what I was going to say.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to appeal the, the Chair's position on that last issue to a vote. Sorry, I'm Nick Chungus, one-one-oh-six Main Road.
And so you are asking for an appeal on which one, please?
I'm, I'm challenging the decision of the Chair, that, of the Moderator, that, that Mr. Carrera's motion is out of order.
A moment, please.
He wasn't allowed to talk to him. This is Titus coaching.
Okay. Now that the waiver's made the room, your appeal, sir, is open for discussion. Anybody else want to?
You, you ruled the motion out of order.
I would just move the question, Mr. Moderator.
Okay.
Can we just clarify, Deb Polish, Lake Road, can we just clarify what the question is, what we're appealing, and what a "yes" does and what a "no" does?
Well, I'll leave that up to, to the Chair.
The question is whether I, uh, erred in, uh, ruling the motion, uh, to have me, if I decided to step down to have Mr. Burke from last year step in, I ruled it as out of order. He has, has been appealed. This is now open for discussion from the floor. And the question is, should the moderator's decision be upheld? So an "aye" vote says that the motion is out of order?
To clarify, if you vote, if you vote "yes," you are voting to overturn the decision that the motion was out of order. If you vote "no," you are voting that, it's the opposite way. Okay, well, basically, my, my, solicitor may differ, but there's a motion on the floor to overturn the decision of the moderator. I think a "yes" vote overturns that decision, a "no" vote confirms his decision. And that's, I think that's the simplest way, and if we agree that that's the way it is, that's what we're voting on. And some of the speakers this morning suggested that we make this thing very clear, what we were doing on every vote. I think that's the clearest way to make this.
Point of order again, please? I'd like to, uh, I'm Louise Durfee, Highland Road, Tiverton. I'd like to ask the town solicitor a question. In the spirit of seeking clarity of what we're voting on, is it not correct to say by the moderator, shall the ruling, my ruling be upheld? If it is upheld, Mr. Carrero's motion fails. Now, I think, do I have to say that again? Now, I think, do I have to say that again? But I'd like to hear from the solicitor on this.
For those of you who have Robert's Rules of Order, uh, page 251, under Rule 24 Appeals, it states that it should be formed in the affirmative. The question is, shall the decision of the chair be sustained? So as Ms. Durfee was saying, and as I initially said, although common sense might say, oh, it's an appeal, it should be yes or no, but just going forward if there's any appeal. It's always on an appeal of the moderator. The vote and the question is always, shall the appeal be sustained? Uh, shall the decision, rather, be sustained? So if you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the moderator's decision. If you vote no, you're voting against the moderator's decision. Okay?
All in favor of...
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, could we have a hand vote, please?
Sure.
Just a point of information, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
So a no vote supports Mr. Carrero's contention. A yes vote does not.
Yes. Okay. Counters?
Point of information, um, just for clarity, a no vote here will lead to a vote on Mr. Carrera's motion. It does not pass it.
Right. Shall the motion, shall the decision of the moderator be sustained? All in favor?
Aye!
All opposed?
No!
I don't think we need a hand vote. Okay, motion fails. I'm sorry, it may not fail. Hold on. Still have to hear from the auditorium.
Mr. Moderator, I believe that now calls for a vote on the motion.
We're wait... We're waiting to hear from the, uh, auditorium.
Mr. Moderator, a point of order, please? Brian Medeas, uh, 127 Granal Avenue. Because we do have people in the auditorium, I would just ask that voice votes, I don't know how you're gonna possibly do that with two different rooms, just going forward, I would think all votes are gonna have to be hand votes, because there's no way that they can participate in the auditorium.
We have now set up a communication link from the auditorium to here.
Right, but I mean, we did... We still have been doing voice votes.
Through Mr. Titus, we have set up a, uh, communication link with the...
So going forward, they will be hand votes so that they can participate equally?
It'll be decided in the auditorium by vote as to whether it carries or fails, that the motion is yes or no.
No, no, they... But they have to be able to participate.
There is...
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
To clarify, Mr. Mede... Christopher Cott, 52 Harris Drive, Tiverton.
Yes.
To clarify what Mr. Medeas had just said, there are two venues here. To do a voice vote here is completely unfair to every member sitting in that auditorium. So it requires a hand vote to tabulate their votes as well. And I put that in a form of a motion, that all votes from here on are tabulated by hand count.
I'll second.
If I may have a point of information? I am in telephone... I'm using, we're using cell phones rather than walkie-talkies to communicate with the auditorium. Taking a voice vote in the auditorium where you're taking a voice vote here, there's a lot less people in the auditorium. If it's at all close, there will be a division with hands first, then followed with a proper motion with the counting. But where there's an overwhelming voice vote in both places, that's the same, and that's what I've been told. There was a voice vote clearly of the nays in the auditorium, as well as the nays here in the gymnasium. There really isn't a need to do a count as well.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator? My name is Larry Miranda, Hobson Avenue, Tiverton. There's a motion on the floor that's been seconded. I ask to move the question, whether or not everything goes forward as a hand vote. That's already been mo... Motion and seconded.
Mr. Moderator, I believe we have prior to that... Mr. Moderator, prior to that motion, there's a motion that's open on the floor that needs to be voted on, because we have not gone through. We overturned the moderator's decision to make that vote out of order, so we needed to vote on the main motion. Then we could entertain the motion to take all our, rest of our votes by a hand count. I still think we need to get through the open motion first.
Basically, there isn't a motion, there is not a motion. Okay.
Mr. Moderator? My name is Bob Goff, Leepus Road. Can I make a motion?
No, you cannot.
That we cut this out and vote what we're here to vote on? Because I think we're here for the budget, not for personal vendettas to vote people out of things.
Yes, sir, you're right.
Thank you.
There is already a motion on the floor. Now, it was sustained. My... I'm sorry, my decision was overturned, that Mr., uh... Carrera was not out of order. Or was out of order, rather. Will you please, Mr. Carrera, restate your motion?
Mr. Moderator? If you, uh, engaged me to work on your roof, and I got to the roof, and I got up on the roof, and I found out I was afraid of heights, I'd leave.
Please, sir, stick to the motion.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that the event you step down, which would be, this was a vote of no confidence in the moderator, that Mr. Michael Burke, who served as moderator at the last meeting, the number two vote getter in the last, at the last meeting for the moderator for the '10 meeting, step, uh, be... This body, vote to put them in place, him in place.
A motion has been made. Point of information?
Yes, Mr. Titus. I'd just like to make a point of information. I understand the appeal has been, uh, the decision, the moderator has been overruled that this was out of order. I just want to state as far as, uh, the discussion on this as why I consider it to be out of order. The town charter provides a mechanism for replacement of the moderator, and that is by the town council, not by this body or the second vote getter. That's why I thought it was out of order. You... It's been appealed and overturned. You can vote, but I, I wanted you to know why.
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
Nick Chungus, 1106 Main Road. I would just point out that regardless of the town, uh, uh, council's, uh, responsibility in that case, as I, as I heard Mr. Carrero's motion, uh, it was based on the voluntary resignation of the, uh, of the moderator.
And I have no intention to resign.
I... But I also recognize that I, I don't see where that precludes the vote.
I'd like to amend the motion, Justin Katz, Arbor Terrace. I would amend the motion to insert the words pending an affirmative vote of a majority of the body. In other words, if, if you do choose to step down, we will vote on whether to go with Mr. Burke as the moderator. The circumstances of your stepping down may affect the decision of who becomes the moderator.
Is there a second to that amendment? Now, discussion on the amendment, are there any?
Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
Now... The amendment is the question. The amendment... The... Does... Please restate the amendment, sir. It's getting very confusing.
The amendment is that to amend Mr. Carrero's motion to suggest that if you step down, we will then vote on whether to go with the previous, with Mr. Burke as the moderator.
As stated. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? Now we will wait for the auditorium. Well, that's a motion. Not an amendment, it's a motion. Who again? Repeat that, please. Thank you very much. The nays have it. The amendment is defeated. Now we're back to the main... Main motion. Any further debate on the main motion? Which, if Mr. Carrera will restate, basically would like me to step down. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor of Mr. Carrera's motion?
Point of information, Mr. Moderator?
That provided the moderator stepped down from these proceedings, or as moderator, that the, uh, second runner-up, Mr. Burke, be placed as moderator.
Point of information?
Yes.
Sanford Mantel, Budway. Uh, can you clearly indicate what the ayes and the nays will indicate? I think that's not clear. What does aye mean and what does nay mean? What are we voting on?
The ayes, uh, yes, uh, you agree? Mr. Carrera, are you present? Please restate your motion. And only your motion, please.
The motion is, when you step down, that we, that Mike Burke takes over as moderator. That's the motion.
Would you like to change that motion?
The motion was, in the event the present moderator steps down voluntarily, pressure, that Mr. Mike Burke, the number two voter at the elec... At the election for said position, takes over.
Thank you. All in favor? I mean that you support the motion. May I have a vote, please? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed? And now we wait for the auditorium.
Mr. Moderator, I have a point of information. My name is Cynthia Allen, 46 Peaceful Way, Tiverton, Rhode Island. I would like to ask you to please ask, um, the town solicitor if this vote is not in fact a violation of the town charter, which he previously said states that in event the town moderator should resign, the town charter, which we voted on as a body, um, designates the town council to appoint a moderator. My question again is, is a vote on this motion in effect a violation of the town charter? Can we then move ahead with the most important questions in front of the taxpayers today, which is the Financial Town Meeting?
Okay, your statement was out of order. It has already been voted on at this point. It is very, it is close, so again, by a show of hands... By a show of hands for yea.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, point of, point of order?
Yes, sir.
Since the question... Oh, Ed Roderick, 19 Sparrow Drive. Uh, since the question is whether or not you will voluntarily, uh, step down, and you have indicated that you will not, then the question is moot, and we should move on.
Point of order? Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Actually, the appeal, uh... The appeal overturned the decision, which then we had to vote on it. Okay? So now, with a close vote, I am asking for a raise of hands. All in favor of the motion as stated, which if I have to have it stated again, I'm sorry, we will. All... All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. The hand with the band on it. All nays, please raise your hand. Okay, you can put your hands down, I'm waiting for the auditorium.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a point of order here.
Not at this time, please.
I'm just talking, making a statement. Before you move to the next vote, you gotta count them.
Out of order.
You didn't count the votes. You... They're gonna report the votes up to the chair first, then you take the negative votes.
We're not counting, we are going by a majority of, uh, of the bands that I, that we see.
Point of order?
Yes, sir. Well, at this point, we're still waiting for the, uh, results from the auditorium. Well, at this point, we're still waiting for the results from the auditorium. Are we now ready for more bad news? Can I have all tellers, please?
Point of order, David Nelson, Peaceful Way. I'm looking at Robert's rules here, and there's a subsidiary motion that we can't... If an embarrassing main motion can be brought before the assembly, a member can propose to get rid of that question without bringing it to a direct vote by proposing to postpone indefinitely. The question. Can we postpone indefinitely the question for the motion if the moderator decides to resign?
We're actually... Another motion. Right. And at this point, I need the counters up front, please. We have to go with a hand vote. With the counters. Where's that counters? All counters, please come forward. Is this any better? A little better anyway, right? I had to move the volume up on the other end. So I think we're okay now. Can you folks hear me over here on the bleachers? Well, they can't, they start talking. We are now gonna take a hand vote on this motion. Now, the motion is that if I vol... If the moderator voluntarily resigns, that the co... That Mr. Burke be appointed as moderator at this proceeding. All in favor? Out of order, sir, please control yourself. All in favor of that motion, please raise your hands and keep them up. The hand with the band on it. Please keep your hands up until you have been counted. The counter will point to you when they have counted you. If you have voted, or if you haven't voted, please take a seat. Everyone, please sit down. Except for the counters.
Excuse me. No, 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 no. It has to do with the counting. You told the people not to count the people standing. Those policemen and firemen are citizens of this town. You need to count them too.
They need to count everyone with a hand band. The officials in the corner, in the back there that are standing up, need to be counted. But in all honesty, the officials that are standing in the back should be sitting down, just like everyone else, because it is a fire hazard. All individuals, except for the police and fire department and the technicians for the sound system and video system, please sit down. It is a fire hazard to be standing at the back of the building, or back of the roof. Please, sit down, obey the rules that you help create. At this point, we are closing the vote on the ayes.
Mr. Moderator, do we have a count of the room?
At this time, we do not. We do have quorum, I can tell you that. Now, all nays, please raise your hand with the band on it. To be counted, please, all nays, raise your hand with the band on it. In the auditorium, nays only, please. The public officials standing at the rear of the room, please, sit down. Question as to how many are here in this room and in the auditorium, is a total of 994. Total ayes, 706. Total nays, 264. Motion carries. Now we move on to the town council resolutions. Town council, please. Mr. Boland.
Point of order?
Yes?
Isn't it my understanding that we can only be here till 1 o'clock, so can we move on?
That's what we're doing.
Town council resolution, resolve that pursuant to section 204 of the town charter, the town council is hereby... Resolve that pursuant to section 204 of the town charter, the town council is hereby authorized to transfer ownership of any of the following of Tiverton's municipally-owned buildings: Knottwood School, Old Ranger School, Judson Street Community Center, Senior Center, Town Hall, and DPW Facility, provided, however, that the municipal facilities committees shall have completed its study of the current use and structure status of such buildings, and submitted its recommendations to the town council, and further provided that any such transfer is either at not less than fair market value, or is less than fair market value to a nonprofit or government entity acting for the public good, and provided that any such transfer be subject to such conditions as required by the town council. This approval shall expire as of the 2nd Saturday in May 2011.
Any debate on that?
David Nelson, Peaceful Way, Tiverton. I'd like to make a motion to amend this. On line 5. On line 5. Right after it says, "Transfer is either at..." To strike the words "either at", and then on the next line after "value", on line 6 after "value", place a period, and delete the rest of the resolution. Our feeling is that these buildings belong to the taxpayers and not the government, and we want the taxpayers to receive the benefit. We need the money, and we can't afford to give these buildings away.
Motion's been... Amendment has been made and seconded. Any debate on the amendment?
My name is Joe Souza, 49 Hancock Street. I'd like to be recognized, please. Sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Souza, please hold. Go ahead.
Yeah. I'd like to make a further amendment, please.
Your name and address, please, sir.
Dana Alcock, Leonard Drive. I also would like to remove the language stated by... Hold on one second. This is important. Let me just go forward with this. Let's put a period after the failed market value and delete the rest of the resolution, and also add, "All funds raised through such sales shall be applied to the principal of any outstanding school bonds." Thank you.
Okay. That amendment has been moved and seconded.
It's already here, on the docket. If you look at the next... The next resolution, it talks about where the proceeds would go.
Anything else, Mr. Souza?
Only I support this because I initially took part in the facilities meetings back when Louis Beetler was our superintendent. And it was stated then that the sales would go to pay off the bonded indebtedness, and I think that's a good thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, we a discussion point?
Pardon me?
Are we at a discussion point?
Yes.
Christopher Carter, 52 Harris Drive. As it relates to the second amended version of this, where the proceeds would go to offset... Where the proceeds would go to offset the bonded indebtedness on the schools. I believe, and I would ask the town solicitor and probably the council president to weigh in on the structuring of those bonds, as to whether or not the funds could actually be utilized to pay down that debt, seeing how the debt is secured by the Rhode Island Building Housing Educational Authority, that we don't have control of that debt instrument. And I think it would be inappropriate. I'm not saying that we shouldn't reserve the funds, or to do, you know, something appropriate with the money, but I don't think technically that that would be permissible by the bond indebtedness itself.
Point of information, was there a second for the second amendment?
Yes, there was.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to comment on the last question. I am Phil DiMatteo, the town treasurer. I am Philip DiMatteo, the town treasurer.
Speak into the microphone a little better.
And in regards to the fact of how that money is to be used, I have checked with bond counsel of Edwards, Angel, Palmer, and Dodge. I have sought a financial advisor for Southwest Company, and the message to me is as follows. In general, the standard bond provision is a 10-year par call. For example, the town's 206 Ryback Bonds are not callable until May 15, 2016.
For example, the town's 206 Ryback bonds are not callable until May 15, 2016. In the event the town has excess funds due to the sale of an asset, the town could defees a portion of the Ryback 2006 bonds. This would require the town to set aside funds in an escrow account until the call date. The town could also apply the sale proceeds towards the annual debt service payments. So regardless of what we raise by selling the buildings, we can handle it and apply it to the bond debt.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate the treasurer's comments. I asked specifically for the town solicitor and the council president to weigh in.
What you just heard from the treasurer is that we could set the money aside, and it would not be till 2016 that that escrow could be applied to that, because it's the call date. So we're putting money in an account that we can't touch and not going to spend it till 2016. It will not immediately reduce any indebtedness on the bonds. We could take the money and apply it to debt service for the next year.
Mr. Titus?
Yes, I concur with the town council president, and as explained in more depth by the treasurer, this isn't like your home mortgage where you can just tell them you're making an advance, an extra principal payment, and have it reduced. You are in fact required to pay the interest out to that first call date. So while you can set the money aside to pay it, you're still going to have to pay interest on it to the first call date, and there also will be additional expenses and fees with the early redemption, kind of like if you actually try to pay your mortgage. Most mortgages have like the first year a penalty if you pay it off early, and that's what we've got out until 2016 in this case, and appropriate other dates with the other bonds.
Mr. Moderator, can I be heard on this point?
Yes.
Jeff Karen at the stage. Jeff Karen?
Yes, sir.
Chairman of the Budget Committee. I'd just like to share my view on this topic for this and for the next resolve. I've sat on the Budget Committee for six years, and if you look at the structure of how the tax cap works, the sale of a building will introduce in general revenue to the general fund, okay? Once the general fund exceeds the minimum that we're now under, then this money will be sitting there, and it could be used in a way such that the, such as to not go back to the taxpayer, but spent in next year's appropriation. In other words, there would be a revenue source there which would go onto the docket and not count toward the tax cap next year. So my opinion is, and I'm now stating an opinion, not the legal arguments or the mechanisms, but my opinion is, is that if these buildings are sold, that we will likely see that money evaporate and spent, instead of going towards something concrete that we know we have to service. That's just a comment from my perspective, having sat in the committee for six years and watched money come in and out of the general fund. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Parliamentary inquiry?
Yes.
Justin Katz, Arbert Harris. Because the two amendments on the floor are not mutually exclusive, we will be, will we be able to vote on each even if the first one passes?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
I think that's right.
The last, we voted on, that's the first.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
To comment on the comments of the Budget Committee Chair, if there was a sale of a building and the money went into the general fund, it would get us closer to having the 3% reserve that's called for by charter, which we are currently under. If there's an excess over the percentage which must be maintained, in the past, that has been used to offset taxes in the next year, so it isn't like it's going to be squandered. The town council hasn't taken any money from the general fund to apply to a budget in the 15 years that I have sat there. That does not happen. Don't be misled that that's what would happen if a building was sold. If the general fund exceeds what should be there by charter, which currently isn't, we find ourselves, when we do need to go out and bond and so forth, that we find ourselves in a position of possibly having to pay more for those instruments because of our financial situation. The reason that this resolution is on the docket in the form that it is, is because we are looking at the municipal structures to see which ones are going to serve the greater need of the town, and which ones may be able to be disposed of. There is no plot, no concerted effort to come up with monies to be spent anywhere else. You people decide at this meeting what the total expenditure of the town will be for the next fiscal year. Any money generated through that sale would go to the general fund, first, to replenish a depleted number which is under the current charter requirement, and second, if something was taken from there, you will get the entire benefit from it in terms of tax relief, as has happened in the past. Mr. Moderator, may I answer to that?
Not at this point. Yes, ma'am.
Laura Epke, Neck Road. So what I understand on the last amendment, from the responses at the table, is that if we approve the amendment, any proceeds from any sale of any of the town buildings will go into an escrow account, a set-aside account, and be used to essentially restructure the bond on the first call date, which would be in about six years from now?
That's... That's the second amendment.
It's the second amendment.
Yes.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator, we're talking two different resolutions here.
We're talking the same resolution, which is talking two amendments.
Sure, on page, on page one and page two, which they're talking about the dissolution of the money to be used as, toward the paying down of debt, is the second resolution.
But we have not gotten to that one.
The amendment referred, the remendment referred to, if I, if I got Mr. Nelson correct...
There are two amendments.
Don't sell it for less than fair market value.
There are two amendments, sir, for this resolution on page one.
And, sir, they are both regarding fair market value, they are not regarding...
No, sir.
The resolution of the money.
The second amendment clearly stipulated that any, it had to go to any outstanding school indebtedness.
Right.
Or school bonds. That, that's the second motion that's on the floor. Did cover the bonds.
Yes, Mr. Souza.
My name is Joe Souza, again, 49 Hancock Street. I'm speaking of, what's, the last, the last amendment where restricting the money, that was not my intent in going forward with further amendments. I did not want to, Mr. Boland is, apparently has my opinion as well, I share his opinion, that at the next FTM, if that building's sold, that the FTM should decide, do we need a fire truck, do we need police cars? We might want to apply in a different, but it would, the money should come back to the financial town meeting. I do, did not want to see these buildings give away. So I would urge that we don't vote up the third amendment, that we vote it down and vote for the...
There's only, there's only two amendments.
I'm sorry, don't vote for the second amendment, but wait until we go, move on to the next amendment. Dana Alcock, Leonard Drive, I withdraw my amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alcock.
Mr. Moderator?
This man in the center has...
Yeah, hi, Tom Parker, William Barton Drive. I think the amendments are the correct way to go. The way the current town council resolution is written and is stated in the docket would allow the town council to give the buildings away and to a nonprofit, or they could sell them for as little as a buck. That's why the fair market value is important. And, and although it sounds good, when we lose the building, we lose the tax revenue. So if it went to a nonprofit, it immediately goes to a tax-free status, and any tax revenue the town might get from that is lost. So my point is, I think we need to amend it. I understand one amendment is lost, I, in my opinion, we should go with the second amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Bob Martin, Hilton Street.
Yes.
I'd like to move the motion. The clock is ticking here, we haven't even got into the financial matters yet.
Right.
We're here two hours.
Motion's been made to move the question. And it has been seconded. Are there any objections? So now we are voting on the first amendment. Okay, the first amendment is that we put in a period after the value FTM, and cross out either at, on line five. And we get rid of the rest of the, get rid of line six and seven and eight. Now.
Point of order, please?
Yes.
Don't we have to vote on moving the question?
No. There was no objection observed by the floor, it has been moved, it has been...
Well, no objections to me means nobody's going to get up here and talk about it, but you still have to have a vote. It's a quick vote, but I mean, don't you still have to have it?
It was, it's not necessary if nobody verbally, nobody objected to moving it.
Mr. Moderator, just point of order to concur with you that the moderator certainly has the ability to ask if there's any objections, if there are no objections on a procedural motion, you just move forward as opposed to taking the time to...
Sounds fine with me.
Now, we are voting on the amendment to this resolution, there's only one amendment to this resolution, because the other, the amendment, the second amendment was withdrawn by the maker.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
May I ask the proposer of the amendment to at least include, the approval shall expire on the second Saturday of May 2011? The whole purpose of this is that if something was to take place, we only need the authorization till the next financial town meeting. Right now, we didn't know, and the reason the resolution is here, that we wouldn't, if there was going to be a sale, we wouldn't have to wait till the next financial meeting. And I would ask that the person who proposed that amendment would include that in his amendment?
The individual that made the amendment, would you...
As I understand it, Mr., David Nelson, Peaceful Way.
Yes.
This is my amendment. The request from Mr. Boland is to reinstate that last sentence where it says, "This approval shall expire the second Saturday in May." And I agree to that.
Because other than that, it's open-ended, and I don't think that was the intent of this.
With no further, with no further discussion, gentlemen. You both have agreed to agree. Okay. On the amendment to this resolution, line five, put a period after FMV, to strike out from there, from that period, to the point of town council, the end of town council, and to approve, so, this approval shall expire on the second Saturday in May shall be included instead of shrunken. Is this understood?
Mr. Moderator, point of information. I thought Mr. Nelson's original also struck out the word "either" and the words "not less."
Yes, I did say that.
Either at?
At this point, I didn't, I'm sorry. Okay, strike out either at, strike out line seven, line six, and part of line seven, to the point of this approval shall expire as the second Saturday in May 2011. Is this understood?
Point of information?
Yes, sir.
For the sake of clarity, can we again define what the ayes and the nays signify? Do the ayes signify, we agree with the amendment, and do the nays say we disagree? I think we have to make that perfectly clear.
The ayes, at this point, will agree with what I have just stated, and that is, striking either at, putting a period after FTM, striking the rest of that line, of that sentence, and leaving in, this approval shall expire as of the second, the second Saturday in May 2011. All in favor? We need to wait for the auditorium? All opposed? Motion carries for this amendment. Now, it... Excuse me? Quiet, please. I spoke a little premature. We still don't have the vote from the auditorium. The auditorium, the ayes passed. Okay. Now, the amendment has passed. Now back to the main motion. All in favor of the resolution as stated? We did the amendment, now we go to the main motion of the resolution, as it is modified. We have no debate, but it still does need to be voted on. According to Roberts Rules of Order, even though an amendment has been made and approved, the main motion with that amendment needs to be approved. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? And now we wait for the auditorium, which I'm sure is going to be the same. And the auditorium, the ayes passed. The motion carries. Taxpayer resolutions. Whereas the town has recently accumulated a large debt burden due to the construction of three new elementary schools which replaced older schools, it is therefore resolved that if the town sells any old schools or other town buildings, then proceeds from, those proceeds from the sale shall be used towards paying down the debt incurred from school-related bonds.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
I'm, I'm looking for a second here. It's been seconded. Any debate or discussion?
Hey, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment. I move that the motion be postponed indefinitely. Since we have already addressed it in the previous motion.
He's right. And it can be. We can do it because... Not sure if we can do that indefinitely, postpone indefinitely here. The motion, the amendment to postpone can be, is up for debate.
Laura Epke, Neck Road, or, I'm sorry. You go ahead, Joe, it's your amendment.
I was going to move the question, but go ahead first.
I was just going to throw my two cents behind Mr. Roderick, if it's possible to postpone it indefinitely because we... If it's possible to postpone it indefinitely because we don't know if and when these buildings will be sold, we don't know what the proceeds are, we don't know what the alternatives are, and it seems to me that we should be making a decision when we have all the facts and something has been fully vetted.
Uh, Madam, Mr. Moderator? Using the same logic that I explained to you when we talked about the last motion, is that any proceeds from a sale will go into the general fund? If you put this toward the school indebtedness, you've heard that nothing can happen with that money except an escrow till 2016. If there is, and we don't even know at this point, a sale of property in the town, the money going into the general fund, any excess of the 3% reserve comes back to the taxpayer pretty rapidly the next town financial meeting. It's usually used to hold down the taxes. It's your money.
Mr. Boland, this is on the amendment to...
May I be recognized?
We're talking about the resolution, and I think that people, when they're gonna vote on a resolution, have to understand the consequences of either postponing or passing it down. And I'm speaking to turning down this resolution, not postponing it. Postponing it is technically the same thing. When we finish the business today, the postponement can't be brought up until next year. It's not like it's going to be voted on at some other time during the course of this year. That's all I'm trying to explain to people, is what happens to the money. And it isn't like it's going to be spent. It's going into the general fund, and the general fund does turn around and come back to you when we exceed our 3%. That's what's happened.
Yes, sir.
Justin Katz, Arbor Terrace, I want to point out that Mr. Roderick's premise for his movement is false. The amendment was withdrawn, this body did not vote on it. The only conceivable reason to table it at this point is to prevent an affirmative vote to follow through with this resolution.
Yes, Jeff.
Uh, Jeff Karen, Chairman of the Budget Committee, I'd like to, I'll state that yes, the money would come into the general fund. However, I'd like everybody to turn to page four of their docket, and let's follow the money trail. What'll, what will hap, what, what, let me just state the facts. What will happen is, next year, it will show up in the bottom half as a reimbursable, in the bottom half of that page, as a negative number against the levy. In other words, the money could get spent and probably will get spent, and you're still gonna get taxed 4.5% next year if that's where the budget process takes us. The money, the cap will ride on top of any offset. It's right on page four in the structure. In fact, I'll, years ago, when we used to have money in the general fund, every year we had an offset that would, was, was in here, and as I became chairman, we didn't do it anymore, so I deleted it. If that money appears, in the, as we used to do, and as the council president says, it will appear in this section, and it will reduce the, it will, will act in a way such that it can get spent, and you can still run it right up to the cap next year. So it will, it has zero effect, potentially zero effect on, on that, on reducing your taxes next year, because the cap rides on top of this list of negative numbers.
Mr. Moderator, it's 11 o'clock, I move the question.
Second.
Motion to move the question. Is there any objection? Seeing none and hearing none. The question is to postpone indefinitely the first taxpayer resolution. All in, a yes vote will kill it. Okay, we'll stop, we'll not allow it to go forward. Okay.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator? My name is Jennifer Rashley, 184 Highland Road. So, a motion to, a motion, if we vote yes, that means that we would table the motion, we would table...
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely?
Yes.
And a no?
We would have to take it up right here. Take up the resolution here. All in favor of tabling this resolution? Or postponing it indefinitely? Say aye.
Aye!
All opposed? And now, we get the auditorium.
Mr. Moderator, call for division.
Hey, come on. I'm doing it the way, I'm doing it the way it is. The ayes have it. Clear. Even, yes, I know. Even though there's no one in the auditorium, their numbers don't over the number that they have. Ladies and gentlemen, an overwhelming majority said no in the auditorium, but an overwhelming majority said yea.
Mr. Moderator, call for hand count.
A hand count has been called for, we must hand count. All counters, please, come forward. We will now have a hand count.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Point of order, Andrea Sousa, 178 Stony Hollow Road.
Yes.
I would like a count of the auditorium if we're gonna do a hand count concerning a bunch of people just left.
We're, we're going to do a count here and in the auditorium, a hand count anyway. She's, she's asking for a quorum, don't, she wants a quorum, don't. By perumpance of the evidence, it looks like we have a quorum.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Exactly what I was going to say, Chris Carter, 52 Harris Drive. A count in the room only applies to question of the quorum.
Right. And there's no, there's a question of quorum, I asked, she has asked for a question of quorum. The quorum is clearly here. You just go to your stations and count. All counters to your stations, uh, show of hands for aye. The motion before us is to postpone the first taxpayer resolution indefinitely. Please raise your hand with the band on it if you agree. Counters, are you ready to count the nays? Okay. Right. But the town can, right.
So they can order the, they can take anything.
Right. And if it passes by a majority, not, it can, it's a, it can be a voice vote, or it can be, uh... The results are, the results are as follows. The nays, 517. The amendment is defeated. Now, we go on to the main motion. And that is taxpayer resolution. The town has recently accumulated a large debt burden due to the construction of three new elementary schools which replaced older schools. It is therefore resolved that if the town sells any old schools or other town buildings, then the proceeds from any sale shall be used toward paying down the debt incurred from school-related bonds. I have a second.
Move the question.
I object. I have a, one further comment I would like to make on this.
Mrs. Dupree?
Uh, Durfee.
There is no further debate.
I objected to move the question. I just want to point out one thing that is in the town's interest that should be heard, and that is this, that if you put monies in a defeasance account pending for six years, it is limited as to the amount of interest that you can earn. It's an IRS requirement. That being the case, the town needs to have the flexibility. These monies should be put back into the general fund of the town, as I think has been suggested by the president of the council.
Excuse me, Mrs. Dupree. Okay? According to, Mrs. Durfee, according to the moderator's Rule 5.
Yes.
There is no further discussion on this matter or any other. It has already been ruled by this body.
No, I don't think so. Mr. Moderator, the, the previous question was moved on the amendment, but it was not moved on the main motion.
It was just moved on the main motion, and that's where you stepped...
But I objected. And I think at that point is, I mean, I all, I didn't want to delay this meeting, I just wanted to point that out to the taxpayers.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator and panel. First off, thank you for your dedicated public service. My name is Susan Scanlon, Bracket Avenue, Tiverton. I would just like to point out that you moved the motion and allowed it to be seconded before you allowed anyone to object. So please allow Mrs. Durfee her set. Because I also agree, if, just as a layman here trying to understand, if this, if the buildings are sold in the next year, the choice is to put it aside until 2016, where it would not be very useful, or to apply it to the general fund where we have debts, correct?
It doesn't say that.
Mr. Moderator, may I?
It doesn't say that.
Hello, point of order. Point of order.
Yes. I recognize Mr. Tights, please.
Mr. Demetier, Town Treasurer. I have studied this extensively.
Uh, excuse me, but all, all debate on this is out of order because you did adopt moderator's Rule 5 after discussion. It's not the moving the question, which is why this is being voted. It's the fact that Rule 5 says amendments are made after the amendments are voted on, the main motion is voted on without debate. And you adopted this as a body. So you have to comply with the rule that you adopted. If you, if you need to debate it, you debate it in the course of the amendment.
Point of order.
But once the amendments are ruled on, there's no further debate on the main motion according to the rule that you adopted.
Point of order, please. Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Tights. My, my reading of Resolve 5 is that it doesn't apply to the situation that we, that, that just occurred here. The motion to table is a subsidiary motion, it was not an amendment to the main motion, and therefore Resolve 5 is not implicated. There can be discussion on this motion until the moderator rules it out of order. Resolve 5 is simply not applicable in this situation, Mr. Tyson, I think that's correct.
Point of order, to further clarification, Resolve Number 5 states that after passing an amendment, the, the amendment failed, so it, discussion can take place.
I, I would concede the point. It is still open for debate then.
Yes, Mrs. Sousa.
Name's Joe Sousa, 49 Hancock Street. Nowhere in this resolve does it say that the money will be locked into any account. It says that the money will be used to pay down school bond debt. If we decide to take the money that we were previously using for school bond debt to either offset the tax rate or make a purchase, that is still allowed. This does not lock the money up. That is false. We will be at the meeting next year if this pass... We will be at the meeting next year if this passes and we will have the ability to decide where that money goes. It won't be decided by the council. It'll be decided by this body. It does not lock the money up.
Mr. Treasurer. Do you still plan to address?
Uh, yes, I'm going to agree everything with what we said. We can do with that money whatever we want to do with. I can put it into a sinking fund. I can maintain interest on it. But my point to you is this, don't be feared into any tactic. We can use that money to apply to the school debt.
Point of order, Justin Katz. My motion to move the question was objected to. That should require a vote on whether to move it. We are now discussing the resolution. We need to vote on the movement, the motion. I move the question.
Okay. It was, that was seconded, by the way.
Second.
No.
Point of order.
Yes.
You challenged the ruling of the chair.
Which ruling?
The one that you're making this so that it's shutting off all discussion about this particular resolution. Moderator is attempting to shut off all discussion based on Mr. Katz's motion.
I am not attempting to shut off all discussion. We went to. Resolution five.
He's moved the question without discussion is what my point is. I think people need to have the opportunity to vet this question appropriately before shutting off debate. And I'm questioning your authority to move the question.
No, he's not moving the question. He's in, at best, he's calling a vote to move the question.
I am in discussion at this point.
If you want to discuss it, vote no.
But we need to. Take a vote as to whether to move the question.
Mr. Moderator, am I allowed to make a comment?
Everyone else has.
Jennifer Rashley, Jennifer Rashley, Highland Road. Um, in contrast to what Mr. Sousa just said. The, the money that, the proceeds from selling any building in town would have to be held until the bonds can be, um, can be restructured. And so that money would, and, and we would have to wait until, um, I don't know, 2017, at which point the, the...
Okay, the question...
Interest rates, we, we have no, it's a gamble. We don't know what the interest rates will be.
Point of order.
The question on the floor is whether or not to move the question. Right at this point, ma'am, you are addressing a totally different, uh, um, subject. And. At this time, you are out of order. We have to discuss whether or not this motion to move the question is going to pass or not. Now. All in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Now we wait for the auditorium. Counters to your stations, please. It's too close. It's too close. Counters. To your stations, please.
Why? Mr. Moderator, why are we counting? Mr. Moderator, why are we counting?
The auditorium. The auditorium was overwhelming the other way. So now.
And there's 100 people there?
Now, we have to count to make sure that it is right. There's 188 people in the auditorium.
Point of, point of order. Could you please clarify the question as a poor layman? I do not know what it means to move to order. And I'd like to know what I'm voting on.
To move the motion.
Move the motion.
Is to limit. All further discussion and debate on the motion, which is, the main motion, which is taxpayer resolution. We have been going through this for a long time. Time is getting short, folks. So. All those. All those. In favor. Of taxpayer, of closing debate. And moving the question. Please raise your hand with the band on it.
Mr. Moderator, are you blind? Do you really need to take a hand vote? Do you really need to count? I mean. Put your glasses on, look around.
We, we have two locations in which it has to be a fair vote.
There's only 100 and some odd people in the other room, sir.
Yes, but it was also overwhelmingly the other way. We'll be back next week. Counters. Are you ready to count the nays? We are just recounting the i's in one section here.
Yes, ma'am. Right there, right beside Mrs. Durfee.
So you're doing a recount for just this section, correct?
Attention, all nays. All opposed to moving the question. Please raise your hand with the band. Counters. This happens to be a two-thirds vote, ladies and gentlemen. All right, that's to move the question. We have results. Which this vote required a two-thirds majority. Nine hundred and four, nine hundred and nine. Voted yes to move the question. Thirty-six voted no.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator.
This person in the middle has the floor.
My name is Carol Durkin, 178 Highland Road. And I would just like to, um, make a, a motion that we change the wording of the resolve to leave out bonds.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but that is too late.
It's too late?
Yes. The, the motion to move the question has passed.
I got the wrong information. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
My understanding of the voting proceeded, John Sousa, 178 Stony Hall Road. My understanding of the process that we talked about very early in this meeting was to go from a voice vote to a raising hands to a hand count. We seem to be missing the raising hands. To me, 930 raising hands simply would have been sufficient and saved an awful lot of time and gotten us the hell out of here sometime today.
And you are correct, sir. But we needed a two-thirds majority. We went by the rules of order. And you're delaying the proceedings even more. We do have a one o'clock deadline. Counters, please to your stations.
Mr. Moderator, can we just vote on this resolve?
There has been a motion to move the question to resolve.
I don't think anybody needs a hand vote for this resolve, Mr. Moderator.
May I have a second to move the, a motion has been made.
We've already voted to move it, sir.
Okay. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed?
Can you just repeat?
We are voting on the taxpayer resolution one. That is the main motion.
Can you repeat the resolution and explain what a yes and a no vote means very quickly before we vote?
A yes vote at this point will say we will accept the taxpayer resolution.
Mr. Moderator. Are we done with that resolution?
Not as yet. Do you want to move the motion?
I have a point of order and a motion to make. Mr. Moderator? I have a point of order and a motion to make.
Is this taxpayer's motion? Is this taxpayer's motion? There's nothing. Not yet.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. You wait one minute, please. What's the problem?
You've got overwhelming eyes here. They couldn't tell in the auditorium, but you've got far more people here. And this is a straight majority, but said you want to call it? Are you going to redo it?
The voice has, the vote. Voice vote has it that we move it forward.
That it passed, the voice vote has it passed. Are you going to announce that or are you going to revote because of the computer?
No. The motion has passed and we will accept taxpayer resolution.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we move to page eight. Of the docket. So we can get into the nitty gritty, into the finances of this town financial meeting. Instead of wasting the whole day on the resolve.
Before we move on, Mr. Moderator, point of order, I'd just like to object to the last vote on the record. I don't think people were aware of the question or knew how to vote.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. But they have the right.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
You clearly stated prior to any vote that you would state whether or not clearly what a yay and nay vote meant. This last vote, you did not state anything of that nature. I, I object to the vote that was just taken because nobody understood what was going on.
Well, seeing all this opposition. Point of order, Mr. Moderator. Yes, sir.
Roger Garth here, Highland Road. My understanding of what we just voted on was to defer any further discussion on the question. We did not vote on the motion. We voted on the deferring any further discussion. Now it is time to vote on the resolution. Thank you.
And which would move the motion forward.
Can I make amendment to that?
No.
Just one word.
Debate has been closed.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator, could you please clarify for us where we stand on this issue right now in terms of voting?
Yes, I'm going to do that right now. We are going to do a revote. Now. We are going to vote again. On taxpayer resolution one.
Please do it by a hand count, voice vote is just a matter of who's louder. We need accurate counts when we're talking about this. Please take all of our votes either by a hand count or by the counters. That's the simplest form, and it gives us a more accurate, especially when we have a hundred and some people in another room. That's fine, but I want an accurate representation of what's here. You can vote, I know it is, but it's got to be done the right way, and the right way is to count everyone who's here attending. There's so much confusion, people don't even know what they're voting on.
Mr. Bowlin, please.
This is not the intent of the Financial Town Meeting.
We are taking a vote, at this point, to move, and to vote on taxpayer resolution one.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. Robert's Rules of, point of order, please, Jennifer Ashley, 184 Highland Road. Robert's Rules states that we are allowed to know what we are voting for, and, so if you would kindly tell us what a yes vote means and what a no vote means, please, thank you.
A yes vote will pass the taxpayer resolution one. A no vote means it will fail. Taxpayer resolution one, as was read, and will be read again. Whereas, the town has recently accumulated a large, a very large debt burden due to the construction of three new elementary schools, which replaced older schools. It is therefore resolved that if the town sells any old schools or other town buildings, then the proceeds from any sale shall be used toward paying down the debt occurred from school-related bonds. A yes vote, a yea vote, will pass this resolution, a nay vote will not. May I have, by a show of hands, a yea or a nay? How about the yays first?
Mr. Moderator, just to be clear, you're taking only yea votes at this time because you run clear?
Only yea votes at this time. Yep. Now, can I have all those opposing this resolution? It's close. Now, we can go right to ballot.
No, don't go to ballot, the counters are doing it, just get the counters. Hand count, don't go to ballot. Get the count, get the counters.
Again, it's close. Counters, to your stations, please. All the resolutions made. All those in favor of taxpayer resolution one, please raise your hand to be counted.
Or there's going to be another motion, I think, I think it's in order if they want to move the agenda.
I can't, no. I could have in the beginning, I could have before it was made. What's the auditorium saying? Mr. Moderator can make the motion. I can make the motion to move the rest of the resolutions. That's right, because I'm not, yeah. Yeah. It's going to be, I've already, I told you. And he's all for it. Yeah, he wants, he says, you know, they're going to try and shoot this all down, you know, move this right on through. But the motion doesn't stop the rest of them anyway, because it's going to be up next. Okay, counters? We are now going for nay votes on this taxpayer resolution one. All those opposed to taxpayer resolution one, please raise your hand with the band. Yeah, I know. Which means we'd have to go by, well, we could go by ballot on that one. Well, you know, if they put it out, uh, two-thirds vote, put it out, and I asked for a show of hands. Right. Right. He? Yeah, it is. We have the results. Can I have quiet, please? I don't want to get any more. They vote to accept or deny resolution one. The ayes are four hundred and eighty-one for accepting. The nays are five hundred and fourteen to not accept resolution one. Motion failed.
Mr. Moderator, could I please speak to?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion at this time.
Excuse me, sir, but this man, this gentleman here has the floor.
I'm sorry, sir, but I think I was at this microphone before he was.
He asked, he?
And I was here before, Mr. Moderator, and I'm making my same motion again. And that motion is that we go to page eleven, I'm sorry, page eight of the docket.
Second.
Mr. Moderator, I, point of order? I would ask that you rule that out of order, it's a deviation from the agenda.
Right. I see no way.
It's a motion to take it out of order, page eight.
Could I, could I please speak and make a motion? First?
I, I, Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to suggest that one option would be for somebody to just move the remaining resolutions all at once.
No.
You could do this in one vote.
No, sir, there is, I have a motion on the floor with a second, sir.
I seconded your motion before.
There has been a motion made, and seconded, to move on to page eight of the agenda. And revisit the resolutions later.
Could I, could I justify my, could I justify why I seconded this motion? I, I think we are here to conduct.
I don't think it's necessary.
This is part of the discussion, isn't it? This is part of the discussion. We are here to conduct very important business. Not these motions, not that these resolutions are not important, but I, I don't think it's right to make the most important decisions in the last twenty minutes of the meeting. And I will move the question.
The motion to move to page eight has been made and seconded. Now this vote will require a two-thirds vote.
No, Mr. Moderator, I challenge that. Why does it require a two-thirds vote? It only requires a majority vote, sir.
Say again, please.
I said, I challenged that, it only requires a majority vote, not a two-thirds vote. Where are you getting a two-thirds vote? The majority of the people here can rule as the way they, how they want to conduct their business here.
According to Robert's Rules of Order, and for those of you with a book, it's page three fifty-one, it's under Rule forty-one, taking up business out of its proper order. Any particular item or business can be taken up out of its proper order by adopting a motion to suspend the rules by a two-thirds vote.
Let me ask you, sir, where is the proper order, and when did we vote on a proper order of this docket?
The Charter provides, the Charter provides that unless otherwise amended by this body, Robert's Rules of Order govern it.
I'm not challenging Robert's Rule of Order. What I'm saying to you, sir, is that where is it written that we have to follow this docket as it is written?
It's not.
Okay, so therefore, we are not, we are not taking it out of order. We're taking it out of the way it's written in the docket, but we're not taking it out of order.
Yes, you're, you're taking an item out of order, which is allowed under Robert's Rules of Order by a two-thirds vote.
Let's have the vote.
But that two-thirds vote is to suspend the rules. In order to accept that motion, we need to suspend the rules, and pass it or fail it by two-thirds majority.
Parliamentary inquiry, will this vote lead us to a specific page of the docket, or are we voting to move to the subject matter of that page and vote on the budget? I mean, the, what is it exactly that we're doing? Are we, are we voting on the budget, or are we moving to a particular page which doesn't have any motion on it? It's just a point of clarification.
I seconded the motion, my second was to move to page eight, beginning with the schools starting on, voting on the budget.
Well, before we can do that, we need a vote to suspend the rules, so that we may go to eight, page eight.
Roger Bennetts, Narragansett Avenue, I believe the motion is out of order, because we have not yet started voting. We are voting on the rules. Since we have not finished the rules, we are not yet prepared to vote on any monetary items. Therefore, I believe it's out of order.
At this point, the rules have not been voted, but the resolutions of what we, the rules have been voted, the resolutions are not the rules of this meeting. Those, those resolutions have been passed already. So, at this point.
Question?
Yes.
Roger Garthier, Highland Road.
Yes.
There are resolutions that affect things that we're going to vote on in the budget that we haven't voted on yet. So, how would we move to budget questions when there are budget resolutions that we haven't passed yet? It was just a point of information, I don't see how we can do that.
Well, what I am suggesting is this, okay? If the individual that has moved that we go to page eight, changes his motion to be that we accept the rest of the resolves as written, and yet, yet a second, then we can just carry on from there.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Under the town charter, if you look at the town charter, it says that.
Can't hear you, sir, speak up.
Town Charter, section three oh six. At least three hundred and one electors shall be necessary to continue a quorum in any special meeting of the town financial meeting. All questions shall be decided by a majority vote of the qualified electors present and voting. A majority, it doesn't say anything about two-thirds.
Point of interest. I object to not doing the resolutions according to the plan which is in here. It is now quarter twelve, we can finish the resolutions and postpone this meeting to next week. The problem is, if you people want to go through this budget, people have objection to school, pardon me? It's all, it's all the school department.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is, please, this is not a yelling match between individuals, this is a business meeting. Please conduct yourself accordingly.
Mr. Moderator, Chris Carter, Fifty-two Harris Drive. In, in, in effort to expedite some issues, I would suggest, and it would be my motion that we postpone taxpayer resolution number two until the end of the financial data, but adopt all five budget committee resolutions right now and move on to the financial data. Because resolution number two is very controversial, and we can deal with it once all. Because Resolution number two is very controversial, and we can deal with it once all the finances are done. It has no impact on the finances.
I will second this.
We still, we'll still have to take five, five additional votes because we got the budget committee resolves, and I know the town council has an objection to three that has taken away the right to transfer, um, between municipal accounts.
I withdraw my motion.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, we need to follow the agenda. There are over fifty people who signed a petition to get the taxpayer resolve on the docket. To do that is to disenfranchise voters.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Burke.
Mike Burke, Sixty-seven Durfee Road. I don't think anybody's talking about not getting to a vote on that. It's simply the, the decision-
Mike, I can't, we can't hear you.
The decision before us is not whether or not we should vote on that resolution, it's when we should vote on that resolution. So there's no disenfranchisement going on here. So I move the question on Mr. Martin's motion.
The question is, it has been moved and seconded to take page eight and out of order. All those in favor of taking page eight out of order and moving the taxpayer resolutions to a later time? Please say aye. All opposed to taking page eight out of order, say aye. A nay, rather.
Mr. Moderator.
I'm calling for a hand count, please. Counters?
Mr. Moderator, did that resolution go, did that motion go through?
Pardon?
I couldn't hear you. Did that motion go through? Did that pass?
It was too close for me to count at this point.
Well, I, I'm requesting a hand vote, sir.
We're going to have a hand count.
Absolutely.
Counters, please, to your stations.
Mr. Moderator, what is the required amount of voters to approve?
Pardon?
What is the required majority for this motion?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
So, so are you telling me that the Robert's Rules of Order supersede the town charter? Is that what you're telling me? It does, huh?
Town charter says we should go by Robert's Rules of Order. Okay. All those in favor of taking page eight out of order and putting the taxpayer resolutions for another time, please raise your hand. This will indicate-
Mr. Moderator, I think that is not the correct statement of what this does. This moves page eight to the next voting items, moves everything else, not simply the taxpayer resolution, after we deal with that section. That's what it does.
You're right. It moves everything else back. All those in favor of taking page eight out of order and moving everything else back, please raise your hand with the band. This requires a two-thirds vote. We will have the two-thirds vote to do it.
Are you counting this table?
I don't know. Yeah, let's see if we can get the school department out of here. That's what it is. They just want to get out. We go back, we will go back to the resolves. No, no. We did it all. They want page eight, they want it all.
Which is really eight through whatever sixteen or whatever, if they do it on their line. But they've really done is they moved up the budget committee docket to the first thing which means the first thing would be to recognize the budget committee.
We'll call you right back.
Good. I can take a break.
We'll call you right back.
Good, I can take a break.
Mr. Moderator, do we have a total count of people in the hall?
Pardon me?
Do we have a total count of people that are here?
At this point, no, I don't, but-
Well, in order to get two-thirds vote, I need to know how many people are in the auditorium and-
We will have the count. Someone's already asked. The total count is nine-nine-seven.
Can you call Cooper and see what he wants?
Counters, are you ready for the nays? Counters, are you ready for the nays? All those opposed to taking page eight out of order and putting the rest of the resolutions for another time, pushing everything else back, raise your hand. All nays.
Listen.
So, are you voting nay?
Mr. Moderator, did you state the total number of people present?
Nine hundred and ninety-seven people total.
Is the two-thirds majority the two-thirds of the total number of electors present or the total number voting?
Voting.
Forty-one nays.
Sorry. I'm here first. Watch.
Hey, gee, thumbs, I'm ready.
How many are there?
They didn't get a count of how many people are here.
It doesn't matter how many people are here, how many people are involved. Not in the room. Who bears the report?
Then why in the past have we asked how many people are here?
We've only done it for a forum.
That's the man totals?
The voting is as follows. Seven hundred and thirty-seven. Yea, two hundred and forty-four, nay, nine hundred and eighty-one individuals voting.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I, I would like to make a motion at this time. That the motion to appropriate twenty million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand-
Excuse me, whoa, 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 whoa.
You cannot have a point of order or have not even put the motion on the floor, sir.
The budget committee has to go.
The, the budget has to make, we, we have to- But, r- rules of order here. Now, by doing this, what do we do is we simply postpone dealing with resolutions, but now we follow the process, I believe, which simply says that now, now, budget committee has to make the recommendation, so we start, and, and then, and then school committee and other departments put out their numbers. So we are not starting with a school committee number, we have to follow the, the order.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Good. But then I'm next.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, budgets.
May I have the floor?
Yes, sir, you may.
Thank you. Budget Committee moves for the school department operating and capital funds from local sources, twenty million, forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Motion has been made and seconded. The floor is open for discussion.
Now, you- Now, I believe, now I believe I can put them, the number for the school committee, for the school department. On the behalf of the school department, I would like to put forward the following number, twenty-five million, six hundred-
Twenty.
Excuse me. I have a right to express that number, and then you can express your opinion. So the number is twenty-five million, six hundred twenty dollars, six hundred twenty thousand dollars, seven hundred seventy-two. So twenty-five, six twenty, seven, seven-two. Of which, twenty million, nine hundred seventy-nine and thirty dollars is from local taxation, and four million, six hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-two is from state and, and general operational aid. This is predicted based on, um, meeting BP and governor's budget, which is three-point-one percent reduction. The budget committee's number is based on the funding formula, which is, which was, which is under discussion. We don't even know which funding formula will be approved, or if it will be approved. So, the, I repeat the total, twenty-five million, six hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars. And based on, based on ruling which we have received-
Mr. Moderator.
Department of Education-
Mr. Moderator, point of order, Mr. Moderator. Are we speaking on the motion?
We have to, we have to-
The motion is not through.
You're out of order. He has the floor.
He's speaking on the motion.
He has the floor.
Present the motion, and then we can speak on it.
You cannot overspeak. He has the floor.
Remember that.
Are you done? There was some confusion in terms of how we supposed to vote on the school's budget. We seek the ruling of right on that, I'm sorry, thank you, Rhode Island Department of Education, legal counsel, on that matter. And we received the answer, this handout was placed over there, together with commissioner's letter, that we have to vote based on Rhode Island statute on the total appropriation for the school, for the school department. We cannot vote and, as a town, only for the local appropriation because ultimately the community is fully responsible for educating the children. So this is not our opinion. We, we know that there was some, there was some controversial discussion on that matter. We did what was right. We went to the state and we got the legal opinion. So, these are the true numbers, these are the numbers backed up by the law, and we will stand by those. Another ruling which happened was against us because we did not know yet how to count federal, um, era money. This ruling was against us, so we had to reduce our number, and we did so. So these are the true numbers backed up by the legal opinion from Rhode Island Department of Education. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, may I make a motion?
I'd like to make an amendment to that motion.
Mr. Moderator, may I make a motion?
Amendment to that motion will be twenty million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars for the school appropriation. That would be the town's, uh, portion of it. What you get from the state is your business. God bless you if you get ten million dollars, but if you only get a million, don't look to us for the rest. That's a state ruling. The state says that we have to give you as much as we gave you last year or more. Well, I would think that that ruling will apply to them. So if they gave you five million last year, they're going to give you another five million this year, or more. The second part of my motion, sir, is that we appropriate, I'm taking this one swipe, seventeen million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars to be appropriated to the municipal budget. And with that, that is one motion, I believe that, that, uh, I would like to make an explanation. I took the requested amount from the school committee versus the recommended amount from the budget committee, and I cut that dollar amount in half. Because I believe that the school department does need an increase. I think fuel, electricity, and other expenses have gone up. That gives it an increase of six hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. That's a pretty substantial amount of money. On the municipal side, I went over the budget committee's recommendation of, by two hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. And what that represented was putting back in the visiting nurses, uh, some of the medical things that we have in town, uh, not eliminating one of the jobs and reducing it to a part-time job. Further part of my motion, and I'll give you this in writing, sir, is to, I would like to request that a ballot vote be taken to ensure the privacy and the fair, unintimidated vote of the people in this hall. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may I make a motion?
Point of order, that is out of order. We voted to consider the items on page eight, and you cannot amend a motion to pass the school department budget by passing a municipal budget.
We also passed a motion to prove the entire docket. A resolution in the front.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Nelson.
David Nelson, Peaceful Way.
Is there any action on my motion?
I make a motion.
Am I, I'm sorry, I just want action on the motion. Is that incorrect? Can we do whatever we want under the aegis of voting on the school department? Which is what Mr. Martin just did.
We can, we cannot hear you.
I'm, I'm asking, is it possible now on a motion, to amend a motion for the school budget in such a way as to do whatever we want? The entire docket? Because then I'll make a motion that we include the taxpayer resolution. I mean, this could be insane if we allow that.
No.
So then Mr. Martin's motion is out of order, correct?
It's got to be combined.
No, not Mr. Martin, Mr. Martin's-
Combined, just to the school budget.
So is Mr. Martin's amendment out of order?
The, the rest of the information that he gave us is out of order.
Superficial.
The, the school budget is on, is up, is up on discussion. Any other information that was given is out of order and will be have to be handled in a separate motion, at the appropriate time.
I challenge the chair. We passed a resolution saying that at any point, number six, we could pass the entire docket. Mr. Martin has a right to his motion.
Could the clerk please read the minutes of what was passed when we moved to page eight?
The court?
Number six, resolution number six, there's no motion to appropriate the budget. As recommended or requested, and there shall be, sure, with the last said motion is adopted by majority. In other words, three wants to move the-
Okay, but he's got to move it then without amending it.
Right.
Right.
That would be separate amendment.
Right. Rule six, the resolution six that you are referring to, rule six that you are referring to, says, "No motion to approve the remainder of the budget as recommended or requested or amended shall be approved unless said motion is adopted by a majority of the Assembly." That does not mean that they can amend the amounts. It would be, it would be just as it is.
No.
What's the word "or amended" mean?
Mr., Mr. Moderator, may I be recognized?
If you look at it, it is saying, the budget as recommended.
Or requested, or amended.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, may I be recognized?
What was that, David?
Mr. Moderator, may I be recognized? Jeff Karen?
Yes, Jeff.
Oh, thank you. This issue came up last year, and it was appealed, and there was a ruling, and what ended up happening is that the motion, the resolve number six, okay, this was, this was the ruling last year, which was, which was upheld, that resolve number six is a, is a standalone, non-amendable item, okay? What's just happened here is, a motion to move the school amount has been amended and turned into a motion to move the entire docket in an amended form. I, I think based upon the, the decision, the ruling last year at the meeting, that we would have to argue that that is improper.
Mr. Moderator, point of order. Point of order takes precedence.
The Board of Order takes over.
Mr. Moderator, David Nelson, peaceful way.
Yes, Mr. Nelson.
I'd like to make a motion, in the interest of time, recognizing that we've made very little progress to move the entire docket as recommended by the Budget Committee for a total for fiscal year of two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven.
Mr. Moderator, you have, you have an appeal before you of your decision that takes precedence. Mr. Moderator, first off, you have an appeal before you from Mrs. Palish that takes precedence. My point of order is that implicit in number six is that there is allowable a motion to take the entire docket. So, I would suggest that we either, we need to move on your, Ms. Palish's appeal of your opinion, and then, depending on that, follow through with the subsequent motions.
Point of, point of order, Mr. Moderator? I believe that the motion before us is an appeal of the moderator's position that, that the mixing of, or the presenting of both budgets is out of order. So, I think as amended, so I, I submit that, that the, that the motion before us right now is whether to appeal your ruling as to whether the motion to present both School Committee and Town Committee amendments is out of order.
Sorry, Andy.
Okay. The reason that the, I ruled him as out of order is he was trying to move not only an amendment to the School Committee's budget, but also amendments to other department budgets, where the School Committee at this time, School Board at this time, has the floor, and they are addressing, and we are addressing as a body what is happening with the School Committee. We are not addressing the remainder of the budget at this time. We are just doing the school budget. So, he would be out of order, trying to move every, all his own amendments to other departments and other totals all at once, which is not the proper way to do it. Every amendment that he wants, he wants to change either has to come up individually, or as a body, this Assembly needs to move the entire agenda, the entire budget.
Unamended.
Unamended.
And I say move. That is my motion.
At this time...
There's an appeal.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. We have appeal your ruling. Now, you need to take a vote on that appeal.
Right.
Maybe it's time that you step down and let somebody up there that knows what they're doing.
Will you restate the appeal? Okay. Let's ask for a vote on the appeal? Okay, Mr. Martin, can you repeat verbatim the motion? So, we know what the appeal is.
Sir, you have my motion in hand, in writing. What more can I do for you?
We're appealing the moder...
I have appealed your ruling. Your next course is to call for a vote, whether the people want to uphold your, your ruling, or if they want to go against your ruling, and go along with what I said. That's all you gotta do, it's very simple. Mr. Moderator, maybe, maybe this is a tactic on your part to delay this until one o'clock when we have to close, is that the idea?
He's saying we can't vote the rest of the docket, and that's what we're trying to do to get out of here.
Stop the explanation, this is the motion. But, let's see, here's why, okay, I have a point of order.
I agree, but I think we get to a motion and we debate it, and not because I want to get out of here, yeah?
Mr. Martin, your motion, you were ruled out of order, and that's being appealed. And therefore, the question the body needs to know is, what is being appealed? And my understanding of what you have presented here in writing, above explanation, is only one sentence. Motion to appropriate twenty million, comma, six-six-two, six-six-six, comma, six-two-two for the school appropriation, and seventeen, comma, two-eight-one, comma, four-seven-nine to be appropriated to the municipal budget.
That is correct.
Okay.
One motion, one motion takes care of the whole thing.
Right, but it's not as written. It's actually your, and this is, I just want to make clear why the out-of-order decision was, and the body can decide or not. It's because you're both moving, one can move the whole motion, the rest of the agenda, but you're both amending it and moving it all in one.
What's wrong with that?
Okay, so, so that is the motion that's been ruled out of order. And now, the moderator's gonna call for a vote on the appeal of whether that's in order or not. And the motion, as we said at the beginning, will be, shall the moderator's decision be upheld? If you vote yes, then it's out of order. The moderator's decision is upheld, and your motion is out of order. If people vote no, then the moderator's decision is overturned, and your motion would be in order.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, before you call for the vote, Mr. Moderator, before you call for the vote, Ed Roderick, Nineteenth Sparrow Drive, I just want to make a comment. We are dealing here with a budget of over forty million dollars. And to put pressure on people just because you want to get out of here at one o'clock, this is the taxes, this is the business of the town of Tivit. And it is not fair to the taxpayers, to the teachers, to the students, to the people of this town, to push through a budget just because you want to get out of here at one o'clock. Okay, now, we need to vote.
May I be recognized?
No.
On the appeal, on the appeal, I would suggest...
There is no further discussion, we are going, we are voting on the appeal.
Right, and that's a debatable item per Robert's Rules, and I have a point to make regarding that discussion.
Can you get closer to the mic, I could not hear what you're saying.
Justin Katz, Arbor Terrace, I am, I want to make a point regarding the appeal, and appeals are debatable according to Robert's Rules. My point is, I do not see anywhere in resolve number six, the authority to move the budget at any time. I see a, a method of moving, of moving the budget, but not something that supersedes the order of the meeting. If that's, if it does supersede the order of the meeting, then I'll make an amendment to move the budget as written, because if number six is overriding everything... This is resolve number six, it does not say anything about at any time, it just says how it will be passed.
Mr. Moderator, may I be heard?
No.
Yes, Mr. Holter.
Thank you, Robert Holter, Lawton Avenue. I would also suggest in the...
Bob, can you, can you speak up, or turn the mic on or something?
I would also suggest that, as we're discussing this appeal, that we are also in violation of resolve number two, that for each and every one of these departments, that it has to go to the Budget Committee Chair, or his designee, and then also to the department heads, if, if, if Mr. Gonzalo chooses to offer an amendment. And, and we're violating, first of all, we only had suspended the rules to get to page eight only, but even ignoring that, we would also be violating probably rule six and rule two if you, if you, if you support this appeal. And so, you know, you, you can appeal the, the ruling of the Chair or the moderator, but that doesn't mean that you, you don't have to follow the rules. So, I would encourage you to not support this appeal, and let's get on with the order of the day. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator? I don't know if Mr. Holter's been on previous town financial meetings, but I've been coming to him for a good number of years, and I'm pretty well-known to have moved the rest of the docket, one shot.
At this point, there's no further discussion. We are going to vote on the appeal. Any other debate on the appeal only? If not, please be seated, and we will now explain. This is on the appeal to Chair. No, what was that? Did I rule them out of order?
Hold on one second. You want me to do it?
No. Should the decision of this body, of the moderator rather, be sustained? Okay, that Mr. Martin is out, was out of order in presenting his motion to include bu, to include budget changes to other parts of the budget, as I called out of order. A yes vote would mean that it, he was out of order. A no vote would mean that he wasn't out of order. Okay? Counters, assume your post. By a raise of hands for yes.
Wait a minute. Wait, a yes is we agree with the mo, I'm confused, I'm sorry.
A yes would agree that he was out of order.
Discussion is ended.
Mr. Moder, Mr. Moderator, I will concede, I concede a show of hands, it's moving along. However, Mr. Moderator, my, my, the first part of my motion stands.
Mr. Moderator, point of order, point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Did you withdraw your amendment, your motion, withdraw the appeal, which?
On the appeal, on the appeal, I, I can certainly recognize that overwhelmingly, people were against me putting them both together.
Okay.
However, I still go with the twenty million, six...
You still want to go with your recommendation on the motion, the motion for the School Department? Is that yes? You still want to go with your motion on the, uh, School Department and the municipal budget?
No, the School Department.
The twen, the twenty million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-two?
That's correct.
For the school appropriations?
Correct.
And the seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-one? No.
No.
So, you want to, you just want the school portion?
Read my lips, just the School Department.
Okay. Okay, the discussion is on... Are there any other amendments to the school budget? Yes? Are there any other amendments?
I have an amendment to the school budget.
Be made on the school budget?
And I have amendment.
I was first, Justin Katz, Arbor Terrace.
Mr. Nelson? Do you have an amendment for the school budget, Mr. Nelson?
For the operating and capital funds from local sources to the school budget, School Department, I move to amend the Budget Committee's recommendation of twenty million, oh-four-seven, comma, nine-six-one dollars by substituting the amount of twenty million, oh-seven-five, four-six-one, which is an increase of twenty-seven thousand, five-hundred. This represents the most we can give the schools, but still stay within the tax cap without further reducing the municipal budget.
All right. That's the amendment.
So, it mean, is this the Third Amendment?
Third Amendment.
I move to amend the main motion as follows, twenty-five, five-two-oh, seven-eight-two for the school, which includes four million, six-four-one, seven-four-two in school aid, which adds, because of the school aid, five million, seven-two-four, two-two-eight to the Budget Committee's woeful recommendation of twenty, oh-four-seven, nine-sixty-one.
Could you, could you repeat the number, we didn't hear it? Could you repeat the number, please?
Twenty-five, five-two-oh, seven-eight-two, which includes aid of four million, six-four-one, seven-four-two.
Order? Order? One more offer, sir, and you will be escorted out.
Point of order, point of order. Mr. Moderator, that needs to be ruled out of order.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, can I, can I be recognized? I'd like to get to the merits of some of these issues. And specifically, I'd like to respond to Ms. Palish, Palish's proposal, and to the proposal that was made by Mr. Brigandi.
Excuse me, sir.
I want to make sure...
Are you addressing the, uh, school budget?
That's right, it's the school budget, and that's all I'm addressing. So, I want to make, I don't want, I want to make sure I'm not lost in this crowd.
Are you putting, are you putting forth an amendment?
I am not putting forward an amendment. What I want to do is discuss the merits of the amendments. J. Lambert, Sunset View Drive.
Let him talk.
Mr. Moderator!
Could I please appeal to school supporters to remain calm, so we can conduct the business? Could you please all remain calm?
Mr. Moderator, am I recognized? Because I'll, I intend to oppose the motion that was made by Mr. Brigandi. I want to know that this is the appropriate time, and I want to review the issue carefully. If there are any other procedural points that have to be made at this time, let them be made, but I intend to address the merits of Mr. Brigandi's proposal.
I will, I will call the vote. I will call the vote.
Okay, now, here.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, point of order. Mr. Moderator, point of order.
Yes, sir.
Uh, amendments number one and number three are out of order because... because they exceed the tax cap and the amount that the schools can request. In the case of Mr. Burgandy, it's the amount he can request, and in the case of the other one, it's because of the tax cap.
I thank you for that information, sir. At this point--
Just one more question.
It is in discussion, we are in discussion about the Third Amendment. And the individual that gave the Third Amendment, please come up to the microphone. And give me those totals again, please.
25,520,782, which includes aid of 4 million 641,742.
Is it town?
We're not doing a town number, we're doing the schools.
Right. The town's contribution.
Subtract the two, the, the thing never said, I had to, I-- Mr. Burgandy, what was your town contribution?
I cannot, I cannot hear you because we are here behind the speakers, so it's like a dead zone here, so you have to speak straight to the microphone for us to hear you.
20 million 979,040. That was his. 20 million 979,040.
20 million 979,030, that's, that's our number from local taxation. 4 million 641,741, this is our estimate of state operational, general aid for operations.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
May I have a point of clarification?
Pardon me?
Point of clarification on these numbers?
Yes.
Please, Sally Black, Vice Chair of Tiverton School Committee, speaking as a citizen. Everything's so confusing, let me cut right to the facts. We always go docket to docket at these town meetings, we have for all these years. Now, last year, we came to this meeting, and the Budget Committee and the School Committee had voted for 25,527,969. That's what we all agreed on, we all came here together, we stood in the street with signs saying "Vote for this." And then we came to this meeting, and a member of the Budget Committee who had voted for this budget, voted for the 24,9, is what we got last year, okay? So this year, we're asking for 25,627,72, which is a 2.9% increase, and only a 1, 0.8% increase from the year before. Don't believe all these 9%'s and 11%'s, it's all garbage, the numbers are right here. No, 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 the facts are here, the facts are here, and the facts are here, the facts are here, the facts are here.
Order. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nick Chungus, 1106 Main Road. I just want to point out that in combination of the single dollar increase last year for the School Committee budget, $1, and in addition to that, the current Budget Committee's recommendation on the School Committee budget, on the school budget. If we support that, in addition to that last year's vote, and we want to maintain academic programming, we will begin by closing one of the new elementary schools for a savings of, for a savings of $500,000, eliminating all extracurricular activities, that means every sport and every after, after-school activity, for a saving of another $231,000. And unfortunately, even the drastic cuts then would only total $738,000 when we have to--
Excuse me, Moderator, uh, point of order, he's out of order. We have three motions on the floor, I move to vote on the motions that were made.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking in favor--
This is not open for discussion.
I'm speaking in favor of Mrs. Palish's motion.
We move the question.
And, well, I'm sure you can after I'm done.
He's out of order, take control of the meeting and point him out of order.
I'm taking control of the meeting, sir. You please sit down, you are speaking over this, he has the floor.
First of all, town charter supersedes, then we go to the resolves, then we go to Robert's rules. That's how this meeting should be run, that's what we agreed to. Follow the rules, please.
Can I continue, Mr. Moderator?
And you are speaking to Amendment Three?
I was speaking in favor of the Third Amendment.
Okay.
Unfortunately, even with those cuts, as I've already listed, that would only lead to 738,000 in savings, leaving us with still 462,000 to cut. I'm getting, I'm getting to the concessions. That means we would have to eliminate, uh, middle school band, high school chorus, strings program to save another 110,000. And then, five or six teaching positions at the high school. Now, if for those people who, who think that getting concessions for the teachers are important, let me also emphasize that the current School Committee budget request includes $440,000 worth of concessions from the teachers, including an 18% co-share on insurance. That is over, that is over--
Order.
That is over $2,000 worth of concessions from each teacher. I, I move, uh, to support Ms. Palish's amendment. Mr. Moderator, move the question, please.
Amendment Three.
Move the question, please.
Point of clarif-- Point of clarification, if I may, my name's Larry Miranda, Hobson Avenue in Tiverton. Mr. Karen, you proposed 20,000 and change. Mr. Martin's proposed 20,600. Uh, Ms. Palish's, 20 million 600,000. Ms. Palish's proposed 25 million. Obviously, the difference is in the state aid and the federal funds coming in. What, are you two folks working off the same number? Because we're talking apples and oranges here, folks.
Why don't we discuss that if I can discuss--
There has been, excuse me, sir.
And if I may--
Yeah, out of order, a motion has been made to move the question. So we do need to move the question, at this point, you're not, we're not going to discuss any further on, uh, the Third Amendment. You can stay there and discuss it, after, discuss the Second or First Amendment.
Mr. Moderator--
That's fine.
I want to get to the merits of both the motion that was made by Ms. Palish and the motion that was made by Mr. Burgandy. They're essentially one in the same motion, they just changed a few hundred dollars.
But you are out of order, because we have, the question has already been moved. It has already been moved, the question, debate on this, on this amendment has ceased.
There are still people up here, Mr. Moderator, who want, who want continued debate.
Okay, I move the question.
There are still people here that are looking for continued debate.
You know, yeah, Mr. Moderator--
The question has already been brought up.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
The motion has already been brought up to move the question on Amendment Three to the school budget.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, point of order. If you table a discussion, you have to vote on whether or not to table a discussion on an amendment. You cannot move strictly to a vote prior to voting on tabling a discussion.
This is not ridiculous, but anybody's telling me what this is all about.
If we take a seat, I think we move the question.
I move the question. Has, a motion to move the question has been presented. All in favor of moving the question, say aye. All opposed?
No!
Nays have it.
What? What? Come back here! What, what the hell did you hear? Come on! Or don't you know aye from nay?
We will go with a hand count. Here we go with more delays.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. Point of order, Mr. Moderator. Tell me, how is it that your hearing is better than everybody else's here in that room over there? Mr. Moderator, a point of order. Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, a point of order. It was, the decision was made earlier in this meeting that everybody was going to have an informed decision to make. You were going to make sure that everybody got all of the facts and everybody expressed their opinions. I'd like to express an opinion about the amendments that were made by two of the speakers, and I'd like the opportunity to, to address both of those issues. You're cutting off debate on an important issue with a lot of money involved, and a lot of these people, let me put it bluntly, are misinformed. At least they're entitled to get a second viewpoint.
Mr. Moderator, point of information, just to help out here. A po, a, a motion to move the previous question is certainly allowable. If you want to continue debate, then you vote down that motion. If you want to just go to vote on the budget, the, Ms. Palish's motion, which is the last one, then vote, um, up that motion, okay?
Can we go back to the vote? You can't seriously think that the nays outnumbered the ayes on that vote, really and truly. You can't.
It has, it has been brought to my attention, and we are going with a hand vote.
Fine, do a hand vote, please.
Counters to your--
Point of information, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, you can go to a visual hand count, vote first, is that what you're doing?
Pardon?
Are you doing a visual hand count?
No, we're going, we're going with the counters.
Why? Why don't you do a visual?
Because--
Then you can go to a count if you need to.
We do need a two-thirds of a vote at this point. Now, the vote is as follows. I will speak up. The vote is whether to move the question on Amendment Three, which is amend the budget from twenty, the proposed budget from 20,000, uh, 20 million 797, uh, I mean-- I'm sorry here.
Mr. Moderator, you're confusing the issue.
I, from 20 million 047.
The motion, the motion before us, Mr. Moderator, is simply whether or not to end debate. If you want to end debate, you vote no. I'm sorry, if you want to end debate, you vote yes. If you don't want to end debate, vote no, it's that simple.
We are voting as to whether to end debate on Amendment Three.
Let me add my own point, the way you just intro--
You're out of order, sir, please.
The comments that you made-- You don't even understand what the issue is.
We need to take a vote as to whether to move the question or not.
Mr. Moderator, a point of order, do you understand what the issue is at this point?
Yes, sir, I do.
Then tell us, why don't you tell us what the issue is that Mr. Burgandy presented and Ms. Palish presented?
The question here is to whether or not to move the question. And the motion has been made to move the question, I need by a show of hands. I would like the counters to count. A yes vote would say, yes, we will move the question. A no vote will say we will not move the question. We will not bring it to a vote and end the debate if it passes. It will end debate if we pass it. Is this clear? It's clear as met. The question is, the, the question is whether we should end debate on Amendment Three.
What is Amendment Three?
The amendment-- No. We are only voting on whether we will stop debate on that. That is what we are voting for, a yes vote will mean we will stop debate. A no vote will mean we will not stop debate. Counters, seal sections, please. A yes vote, raise your hand if you agree to move the question.
Mr. Moderators--
And stop debate.
Mr. Moderator, point of order. Mr. Moderator, point of order. For a long time, this, this, this particular discussion has been totally--
Not in the middle of a vote, we have a point of order.
Yes, you do have a point of order. But I appreciate if you first recognize me, Robert Payne, 24 Little Harbor Road. Will you say, yes, you recognize me? Do you recognize the speaker?
We will not have a point of order while we are doing a vote, a yes vote.
You were not voting at that time. You, you have failed entirely through the last 15 minutes of this whole session to recognize speakers. You have let anybody who walked up to this microphone say what they wanted to say. No recognition, names were not given in most cases, and they were not recognized by the moderator. Therefore, their comments are not even acceptable within the meeting. As are mine, because you did not even recognize me. Now, this is totally out of control. And you want to get something done in 15 minutes, somebody wants to get it done in 15 minutes, and it's not going to be the right thing when it's done. Eh, whichever way it goes, it won't be the right thing, okay?
I just came up to say hi. You're too in color. I forgot why I'm here. Nice place.
Nice place!
Number 2. I do call to stop the debate.
I'll tell you.
You have the right to discuss that.
It's an embarrassment to the Tiverton resident today.
Mr. Moderator, point of order. We ended the A-count a while ago, are we on the nays yet?
Say again, please.
Where are we in this count?
With all this yelling in here, I can't hear what you said.
Where are we in this count? It seems to be taking more, longer than what...
We are waiting for the auditorium's vote to come in.
So it takes longer to count the auditorium than it does to take 900 people here?
The auditorium needs to vote aye or nay, vote aye, and they haven't gotten back to us with it. Quiet, please. The auditorium people, please vote aye if you want to stop debate.
Are you deliberately lengthening this meeting? This is ridiculous.
You are out of order, man.
Yes, I am!
Can I make a point of order, please?
You're out of order.
All I want to do is make a point of order. I want to make a point of order here.
I'm trying to give instructions, and if you keep coming up to the microphone, the individuals...
This is my first time up here.
The auditorium needs to vote on whether we're going to stop debate on the motion. Now...
Next Saturday, why don't you stay in bed?
If everyone keeps talking over me and on the microphones, the auditorium cannot hear what is happening. The auditorium needs to vote as to whether we're going to stop debate.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to know if the committee is, if we are intentionally stonewalling to, so that we'll have to come back next week. And attendance will be significantly reduced by the citizens.
Another outburst and you will have...
I'd like to make another point, I'd like to ask the voters to impeach you, to get you out of office, because you know what, buddy? If we can impeach the president, we can impeach you!
Mr. Moderator, while we're waiting for the decision, I could sing and dance if you'd like. I've been here like 20 minutes.
You're out of order, sir.
But I think I was just going to make a couple of comments before 1 o'clock comes.
You are out of order, sir.
Pardon me?
You're pleased, out of order.
I'm out of order?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please have a seat.
My name is Frank Rodrick, 21 DeCosta Drive, and I just want you all to know how ashamed I am, because this has been a travesty. There's no right and there's no wrong.
Have a seat.
And I must make a specific comment, I don't know that gentleman there, but hearts and flowers when somebody's speaking, that's inappropriate.
All right. The nay votes, please raise your hands. This vote is the nay vote to not stop debate.
Can you please clarify what we are voting on?
The nay votes.
Could you give us, Mr. Moderator, could you clarify what this vote is?
The nay votes. The nay votes on whether or not to stop debate on this issue. Please raise your hand. The nays will mean you will not stop debate.
So raise your hand if you do not want to stop debate. So, Mr. Karen, you did want to stonewall this, didn't you, Mr. Karen?
I have a question, can I ask you a question about something? About the time? Since we started at Patrick Latuca, 97 Preservation Way, since we had a 15-minute start time delay, does that mean we can go until 1:15?
Mr. Moderator, may I ask a question while we're waiting for the vote of the solicitor? May I ask a question while we're waiting for the vote of the solicitor?
We're still waiting for votes to come in.
It's simply a question. In the interest of time, I think it makes sense to ask the question. So, Mr. Solicitor, on page 224, at least in the 10th edition that I have of Robert's Rules...
Excuse me, Mr. Burke, but you are out of order, have a vote to announce. Ladies and gentlemen, the motion to cut off debate failed because we did not have a two-thirds. There were 598 yea, 335 nay. The motion failed because it was not two-thirds, there were 622 voted.
Point of order!
Point of order!
On page 4, sorry, may I go? Page 4 of Robert Rules of Order says, "The actions of any deliberative body are also subject to the applicable procedural rules prescribed by local, state, or national law, and will be null or void if invalidation of such law." I heard earlier that the town charter says all we need is a majority. That's the rule of law, not this, local law takes precedent.
Charter says Robert's Rules.
Point of order. After your rule. Have you ruled on that yet? I don't want to step out of turn.
It is 1 o'clock.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, then I ask to be heard.
This meeting is adjourned until next Saturday.
Mr. Moderator, I ask to be heard! Mr. Moderator! You should be smiling, Mr. Karen. Please, all those who came today, make sure you show up next week. It's highly important that everybody shows back up and gets rid of this ridiculousness.